All right, good evening. I'll call tonight's meeting to order for November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Metz, if you'll call the roll, please.
Sam Cornwall.
Here.
Roger Daniel.
Here.
Gray Yimer.
Jamie Lachinas.
Here.
Paul Nenney.
Here.
Todd Moore.
Here.
John Langkorn.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next in our meeting minutes, have we had a chance to review the minutes from October twelfth? Any questions or concern about the minutes? No? Okay. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. And a second?
A second.
Okay.
John Langkorn?
Yes.
Todd Moore?
Yes.
Paul Nenney?
Yes.
Jamie Lachinas?
Yes.
Roger Daniel?
Yes.
Sam Cornwall?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to our first public hearing this evening. Final Development Plan, a request by applicant Caliber Engineering on behalf of property owners, South Broadway Development and Paradigm Development Group for preliminary development plan approval for an apartment development that proposes ten twenty-four unit residential buildings. I'll let Mr. Metz give us the rest of the details.
Thank you. So tonight before us, we have a final development plan from applicant Caliber Engineering on behalf of South Broadway Development and Paradigm Development Group for two hundred and forty-three unit residential buildings, a clubhouse pool, outdoor recreational area, and a dog park to be constructed on a portion of twelve point six acres. Property background, the property, the subject property is currently zoned BCH Business Center Hub Subdistrict. Per the Middletown Development Code, the purpose of the BCH Subdistrict is to create an urban mixed-use core that serves as a vibrant hub of the B C District, encourage signature architecture and landscaping treatment, and an urban pedestrian-scale environment through building height and building and parking lot placement and design. The applicant proposes a planned unit development that will feature two hundred and forty-three unit residential buildings, a clubhouse pool, outdoor recreational area, and a dog park to be constructed on a portion of the parcels. Per the Middletown Development Code, the purpose of the P D Planned Development District is to provide an opportunity for creative and flexible lane development where a base zoning district would not accommodate the proposed development, but where such development will further the purpose of the code and the goal and policies of the master plan. The P D District is designed to allow for deviations from certain zoning standards that would otherwise apply, if not contrary to the general spirit and intent of the Middletown Development Code. Per the Middletown Development Code, chapter twelve ten Architectural Standards, the first above-ground story of a residential dwelling shall have facades constructed of stone, brick, wood, stucco, cultured stones, cement siding, or hardy plank when such facades are visible from a public street. All other exterior walls of the dwelling may be constructed of other code-approved building materials. Per the Middletown Development Code, chapter twelve ten Architectural Standards, at least three of the following design features shall be provided on the front facade of each dwelling unit with frontage on a public street, one or more dormer windows or cupulas, a recessed interest, a covered porch or balcony, pillars, posts, or pilasters, one or more bay windows, a parapet wall with an architected design which entails design variation rather than a simple rectangular form, or multiple windows with a minimum of four-inch wide trim. To the maximum extent practicable, all roof vents, pipes, antennas, satellite dishes, and other roof penetrations and equipment, except chimneys, shall be located on the rear elevations or configured to have minimal visual impact as seen from the street. There were some changes from the preliminary development plan that you saw several months ago. The difference is changing the number of units from two hundred and forty to two hundred and forty-three. I'll let the applicant speak on that. And then asking for a waiver of the park impact fee, which is approximately five hundred dollars per unit. I will cover that in a little bit. The Middletown Master Plan, the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one Comprehensive Plan, designates this property for office, industrial, medical, and other similar uses, primarily office, high-tech, industrial, medical, and other similar uses with secondary uses that include commercial, service, and residential. So for the park impact fees, I sent you a PDF about this, I think about two weeks ago, or maybe earlier, or later last week. I'll just kind of cover the purpose of park impact fees and then what it, what it is to have a credit and what it is to waive. So all park impact fees collected shall be deposited in a separate and distinct parkland acquisition and capitalization fund. The applicant shall pay to the city a park impact fee in the sum of five hundred dollars for each new dwelling unit. The park impact fee will be collected at the time a final plot approval is requested for a subdivision or prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance for all dwelling units that are not part of the subdivision. The fee shall be based on the total number of dwelling units contained in the application. In no cases shall more dwelling units be constructed than the number approved and the number for all which, for which the park impact fee has been paid. All park impact fees collected shall be used solely for the acquisition and capital improvement of parkland within or adjacent to the city. No fees shall be used for any other purpose, including maintenance, operation, or the replacement of any existing capital improvements in existing parkland or the maintenance and operation of any parkland. The Planning Commission shall have the authority to determine whether the proposed private open space qualifies as credit toward the park impact fee. The Planning Commission may take into consideration the factors established in twelve fourteen oh six when considering the private, whether the private open space shall be used as a credit toward the required park impact fee. The following areas shall not be counted towards private open space. Private and public roads, public or private parking spaces, accessways, or driveways, required minimum spacing between buildings and required yard setbacks, vehicular use areas, land that is subject to pre-existing conservation easements, above-ground buildings, pipes, apparatus, or other equipment for community or individual use, septic or sewage disposal systems, substations, public utility easements, dry stormwater detention basins, or facilities, leftover land that has no value for development that, and is not a natural resource that contributes to the quality of the overall project. The use of the private open space is restricted for park purposes by recorded covenants that run within the land in favor of the future landowners, future owners of property within the subdivision or development and which cannot by their terms be defeated or eliminated without consent of the Planning Commission. All private open space utilized as a credit on this chapter must be permanently protected by means as established in section twelve fourteen oh seven. Up to fifty percent of the park impact fee may be credited through the creation of private open space based on the value of the open space created. If the value of the land dedicated is less than fifty percent of the required park impact fee, the remaining shall be paid in accordance with this chapter. So briefly, I just kind of covered what is the park impact fee. The Public Works Department is the one who maintains and operates the account in all of our, all of our parks. This is completely up to Planning Commission to waive if you would like to waive all of it or, or a part of it, considering that they, they do have public open space. Here's a rendering that was provided both in the staff report and during the application. This is what the property would look like. Here's a site, site plan of what the property would look like. You can see here, all units are twenty, twenty-four units except this one, this one, and this one here are all, those three are all twenty-five units. Everything else is approximately same. I think they have, they had previously only two entrances. Now we have three. These entrances are blocked off with the fence, and this is open to the clubhouse, which is where the mouse is. Here's a front facade of what the building looks like. Please note on the legend, the building materials, and I'll go ahead and read those out loud. So twelve-inch horizontal fiber cement siding, it's hardy plank, six-inch horizontal fiber cement siding, hardy plank as well, six-inch horizontal fiber cement siding, board and batten fiber cement siding, fiber cement trim, eight-inch fiber cement board bar, board band, composition shingle roofing, P T wood brackets, painted aluminum downspouts and gutters, six inch fiber cement, fiber cement fascia, galvanized steel railing, and vinyl windows. This is the front, and this is the back. These were illustrations or pictures that were, or renderings that were provided to us previously. They pretty much look exactly the same. Public notice requirement for the Middletown Development Code, the public notice requirements were already fulfilled throughout the preliminary development plan and then going to be seen before City Council both times. City's Internal Development Committee reviewed the proposal and gave its support, well, when it, when it comes time for public works. The Development Committee includes the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Engineering Department. The construction plans need to comply with the engineering manual of design. Review criteria for the P D Final Development Plan. The following criteria shall serve as conditions that should generally be satisfied before the approval of the P D Final Development Plan. A, appropriate arrangements with the applicant have been made, which will ensure the reservation of common green space as indicated on the P D Preliminary Development Plan and P D Final Development Plan. Appropriate agreements with the applicant have been made to ensure the proper completion of public improvements in compliance with chapter twelve twenty-two. The proposed P D Final Development Plan for the individual sections of the overall P D is consistent in contents, building location, lane uses, densities and intensities, yard requirements, and area and frontage requirements with the approved P D Preliminary Development Plan. The minimum common green space areas have been designated and shall duly transferred to illegally established homeowners, property owners, or condominium association, or has been dedicated to the city or another public or quasi-public agency. Each individual phase of the development can exist as an independent unit that is capable of creating an environment of sustained desirability and stability, or that adequate assurance will be provided that such objective can be attained. F, that any part of the planned development not be used for structures, or not used for structures, parking, or loading areas, or street shall be landscaped or otherwise improved, or if approved by the Planning Commission, left in its natural state. That any exception from the design standards provided in the preliminary development plan is warranted by the design and amenities incorporated in the P D Final Development Plan, that the internal streets and thoroughfares proposed are suitable and adequate to accommodate the anticipated traffic within the thoroughfare, the development, and the Final Development Plan has been transmitted to all other agencies and departments charged with responsibility of review. The applicant is here, and that ends my staff report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Metz before we open the public hearing? Okay. Well, I'll now open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
I guess I can stand this way.
So I'll need to swear both of you in. If you would, I'll swear both of you in at the same time. Just please say your name and address for the record.
Art Harden, Caliber Engineering.
Jordan Wallace, Fifty Eighty Spectrum Drive.
For the testimony, you're about to give the board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. It's been a while since I've been here. This has been sort of a long trek. We started in May, so we've come a long way. The, the site plan that we have now, and we're asking for final approval on, first off, I want to make mention with regards to the changes in the number of units because we did go from two forty to two forty-three. That did not change the building footprints. What we did was we took a, a three-bedroom, it was on the first floor, combined it with a hallway area, and basically split that into two. So that would, that allowed us to pick up an extra unit, more of an efficiency type, two efficiency type units. So, but that's only been done in three of the buildings. The rest of them are all still the same. So we, we've got a, a good mix of, you know, single bedroom and, and two-bedroom and a few three-bedroom. So the mix seems to fit within their program and how they want to address the community and how it fits in with the, the needs of the community. So with that, what we did do is there's been a lot of beautification to the project from our very initials to middle. And the site plan that we presented tonight with the three entrances is basically the same one that we presented at the night of the Planning Commission meeting. Because we did have a little bit different plan with, with our application, and, but we did update it drastically before we came to the Planning Commission meeting. So we do have the three entrances, it'd be a gated community. We've got two ponds programmed for the front. We have been through the, the drainage analysis and been through everything, so currently our construction drawings for the site itself have been turned into the city for review. The building plans are programmed to be coming in this week. So that's how serious we are about getting this project underway. So with that, we've got, like I said, Jordan Wallace is here from Wallace Management. He's representing the owners, and he's the main man on this thing.
Thanks for your time. I really do appreciate it. And from the original vote, I appreciate everybody's excitement to see this project come to fruition. We took a lot of key notes from previous comments from city staff, also city council in our, in our last discussions about really incorporating a lot of the outdoor elements here and bringing amenities that attract a lot of the group that we're really trying to target here. And we fundamentally circled back to the market study the city had completed roughly about a year ago about the, the market demand here. And just to piggyback off of our statement, one of the key things is the demand for one- and two-bedroom units. One of the things, just looking at the sixteen apartment properties available here in Middletown right now, is there's an abundance of two- and three-bedroom. There's a project that may or may not happen, Innovation Way, I'm sure you are familiar with, that's focusing on two- and three-bedroom. And then Nicholas Place is also predominantly two- and three-bedroom. There's a, a demand there for one- and two-bedroom. It's, it's business professionals, individuals that you generally see hugging around Westchester, Mason, some of those other demographics as we kind of studied the corridor up to date. And, and so that was the reason why we went back and incorporated the one- and two-bedrooms, a little bit heavier on that percentage. I hope it's a great project. I really, we, we put a lot of effort and love into this. We're, we're a holder, so whenever we put these projects together, we take into a lot of consideration.
I don't necessarily have any questions regarding the, the plan itself, which does look very nice. I know at some point we need to address the, the impact fee. Was that going to be something that you're going to talk about this evening, or?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay.
So we've been working closely with Warrant County, trying to find opportunities there, also working with the City Manager, and also have had some assistance from City Council on this request. This is a tough request, and like Art mentioned, we started this process back in March. A lot of, the world was a different place back in March, right? Interest rates were half as much as they are today, construction costs were twenty percent less, and, you know, all these other sad woes that you hear from developers as they come up to put their projects into, into key right now. So I have a tough decision to make over the next sixty days, and that's which projects we're going to be able to proceed with. This is a forty-five million dollar investment into Middletown. We take it seriously. I've come all the way up here today just, just to present and talk about this project with you because it means that much to us to see this project happen. We, we made this request based off of some input with city staff and some of the opportunities that we may see. We, we don't see this as a, a fee waiver, although the title on the application is that. We see this as an opportunity to allocate the right amount of funds to see the landscaping done right. You know, I think I drove, we came in town this morning, and I drove about five or six different apartment complexes, and a lot of corners were cut as far as exterior landscaping goes. Our neighbor across the street, we've been talking closely with them and sharing with them these drawings and taking a lot of that into consideration. With this being one of the most visible areas of Middletown, and hopefully will be the biggest amount of growth, we want to make sure and set a standard that future neighbors come to develop to the north, understand that we're, we're here to stay, and it's, it's a really good product. So that's really the fundamentals why we put this application together. Like I mentioned, it's, it's roughly about a hundred and twenty-one thousand is the request here.
Okay. I was going to ask you if I had my math correct on that, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Five hundred.
Yep. And you're primarily now on the, the document here that you submitted from Wallace Construction Management. It talks about, you've mentioned the landscaping, you also mentioned in this document here about stone countertops. Is the primary request that you're trying to improve the, the architectural standards of the site? Is that the primary reason?
I think globally, there's a lot of buckets to fill here. There's, there's a quality that we maintain around the, the multiple projects that we've been building. We're, we're going to stick to stainless steel appliances. We're going to stick to stone countertops. We, we thoughtfully designed ten-foot units on the first floors and then also incorporated these dog areas, which I, you know, the term park area and open space is kind of globally defined as just really open space. And I think having that twelve-foot by twelve-foot dog yard on the first floor, it's been really attractive with the other properties that we put together, and a lot of pet lovers seem to enjoy it a lot. So that's, that's really where we're investing a lot of those dollars.
Any other questions?
How accessible will the dog park and the pool, the ponds be to the public, the people that don't live here?
Currently, we're discussing, and, and I know there's two requests on there that wouldn't apply to this meeting, but there's a request for a water impact fee waiver and a sewer impact fee waiver. One of the things that we're trying to identify right now is whether we put access control at those gates. And, and, you know, effectively, if we do that, it wouldn't be the portion behind these two ponds, as you see in the front right here. These would be newly constructed ponds. These would be areas with like a jogging path around it that would be open to the public. One of the things that I'm talking with Atrium about is a, a future plan for a sidewalk that would connect through the commercial portion to that crosswalk right there. So to answer your question in, in a full circle right here, just that front portion right there where the two ponds are.
Todd, I, Mr. Moore, I just want to say one thing. So when it comes to park impact fee waivers, the Planning Commission ultimately has the final decision depending on, on what they waiver, or what they waive. But if there was land donation, that would be strictly public, given to the city, and the city accepts. That's one way. Or the other option, which is what Mr. Wallace is going through, is private open space. So they're arguing that they're, they're, all their walking paths and then the dog park as well contribute a significant amount to waive the park impact fees, if I, if I understand it correctly.
That's a great point. I did read the, the ordinance as well in sixteen fourteen. There's an opportunity to donate this land at fair market value. It's a hundred and twenty-one thousand is what we're asking, and the fair market value is much higher. If I show you what I paid per acre, you're probably going to say, you know what? You just keep it and maintain it and make sure it looks good. So I think that's not why, and I'm open to giving you the land, but if we go fair market, it, it, it might actually be more to my benefit and not really to the cities. But if you're open to it, I'm open to it.
If we did waive the park fee, what assurances do we have that you're going to spend it? On what you say you're going to spend it on?
Pardon?
What, what assurances would we have if you wanted to, if, if you're going to spend a hundred and twenty-one thousand?
I'd, I'd, I'd recommend that we put it in the, the approval of the P D. I, I think we're, I feel like to date, we've been very honest if we're coming with what we want to design here, and our drawings really speak for themselves. You know, as, I think as long as we're held accountable by the city, we're, we're going to do what we say. So, and, and I have over two thousand doors completed in the last two years, which support a lot of that quality and effort.
Any, any other questions?
I, I've asked James to put up the landscape plan because I'd like for you guys to see what that looks like. And I, I think once you take a look at it, you're going to see that there's been a lot more done in terms of landscaping for this project than what, what is really required by the code. And you can look at, as Jordan said, you can look at some of the other, you know, Nicholas Place, even though I, I did that one, but we kind of went strictly by code. But the landscape plan is pretty extensive.
If I may ask, while he's pulling the, the document up, if you could just give us some background in your conversations, and I, we have Miss Nenney here as well, but just some of the, the context. You mentioned that you'd been working with some of the comments that council shared with you. Just, could you share just some of that context with us as we consider the impact fee waiver?
Yes, absolutely. A lot of this came from our original approval here at the city council meeting. And we were discussing the renderings and kind of some of the expectations. And at that time, I, I made the commitment to provide stone countertops, provide stainless steel appliances. And these are significant dollars from an improvement standpoint. I'm sure some of you have development experience here and understand kind of the world that, that revolves around that. And a lot of that input, we kind of, we took a hold of to make sure that, just understanding this is such an important area to the town and, in general, those were those specific comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, the landscape plan isn't colored, but as you look at it, you can see that the, the extensive amount of trees that, that go all along and the shrubbery that, that's all along every building and the entrances. So there's been an extensive amount of additional landscaping that has been programmed for this. And even in the, the swimming pool area, that's all been enhanced with a, I think it's a barbecue grill cover.
That's correct.
Yeah. So they, they've got a grill, a covered grill area in, in the pool area. They've got, you know, it's all been kind of programmed to take into account the environment with pulling the barbecue grill over, you know, to the west side instead of the east side. A lot of these things have been looked at as, as we've gone through. And again, you know, the, the extra landscaping, the fencing is there for security. That, that's what the program is for that. So, you know, you, you could have an apartment complex with probably half as much landscaping, still meet code, no fencing, and not near the amenities. And the, the clubhouse area, that has all kinds of activities for it on the inside. So they, they even have a, a model of one of the rooms inside that. And the purpose of that is so that, you know, they're not going out disturbing other people, you know, in, in their own home. They've got something that they can show them right there in, in the office area.
Thank you. That's okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
James, I have a question for you. Has the, and maybe you know the answer to this, maybe you don't, but has the city recently waived park impact fees for any other projects similarly in, in other developments?
I, I do know that there was another development on the east end that asked for a park impact fee waiver, but this was after the final development plan. So then it's kind of outside of my real house and more within the City Manager and Public Works Department
Okay.
to handle that. I don't know if.
So for this board to waive that park impact fee, it has to happen now before this development plan is approved, correct? Or?
Um, not necessarily. All I know is that, um, before I can issue any COZs for these buildings, certificates of zoning compliance for any of the construction of these buildings, the park impact fee waiver has to have been met now that.
And that hasn't happened since you've been here?
Um, no. Generally, I've only, um, I don't approve new homes. Um, Ashley does that, but the single one-off homes that we've had, um, don't require that. And then no large-scale development has fully went all the way through, um, with any other plans. So the, the other plan development, that is on the east end. Um, they went through for an amendment to a plan development for, um, building material change. And then there was a, probably about a six-month hiatus on whether or not they were gonna actually develop. And I think they're, um, going back to, uh, considering to develop it again now.
Okay.
But it's, um, it's a little bit of a gray area cause it hasn't been.
They weren't looking for park impact fees?
They were.
They were.
They just, I mean, but this was, they, they asked after, um, the attic is asked.
Okay.
So I'm not.
I just, I've, I've not, I mean, I've only been on council for three years. I haven't had any other experience with a request to waive park impact fees. But also reading through the requirements, I, I guess I was a little bit confused about, um, with this being a private, um, with them being private residences with a gated community, um, and the dog park being private and the dog park being the mode of request for the waiver. Um, it, it looked like in our, um, in our requirements, they, um, can only ask for fifty percent if it's a private.
Correct.
If it's a private park. So I, I just was, can planning commission waive above that fifty percent? Or is that the total that they're allowed to waive if it's a private park?
From my understanding, um, after speaking to development committee and the law department, um, planning, planning commission has the final authority if they wanna waive all of it. If they wanna just take a credit of up to fifty percent of our fair market value, um, which would, I, I'm not sure if that would make the most sense on this, but.
I was just wa- I was just, I was trying to clarify. Does this board have the authority to waive the entirety of the fee? Or are they limited to the fifty percent fee?
From my understanding, with speaking from the development committee and then.
Attorneys that they can waive up to all of it.
All of it. It's, it's truly up to them. They can also put requests.
And I, I did whenever I was going through twelve, uh, fourteen oh six as under the credit section. That was one of the things that we had discussed. So I didn't, we didn't wanna overreach before making this request, so we were confirmed.
I just wanted to make sure that this board was clear that that is their authority. Okay. Thank you.
Um, while, while we're on that topic, um, you have the option to, when you go to vote, vote solely for, um, the plan development, the final development plan, and then vote for the park impact fee waiver as a separate one. You can vote for them as, um, or you can vote for them at the same time. And if you decide to waive up to fifty percent or up to seventy-five percent or a hundred percent or, or none of it, um, you can, you can also make conditions as, uh, Mr. Lankorn, you mentioned previously. You can vote for both at the same time with approving the plan development and then denying the park impact fee waiver. You can deny both. You can approve both. There's a lot of different combinations you can go. If you have any questions, please ask me.
Yeah, my feeling is, is that this is exactly the quality of a, a development that I think the city needs. Uh, park impact fee would be, okay, the residents in this development, are they gonna need it? Is the city gonna have to provide additional park space to accommodate additional population, right? Regardless of where it is. The decision, I think, is, 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 are the ponds and the dog park and the pool and all that sufficient to grant a waiver because the, the residents of this development are gonna stay pretty much at home? That's one aspect to look at. And the other is, is if we can make this, uh, you know, as beautiful as I think that they want to make it, it's gonna be the lead development in the area for the city of Middletown. And let's face it, this construction, the landscaping and everything is gonna result in higher rents, higher incomes, brought, drawing people from, you know, the other exits, north and south. I think for the city, they're gonna more than make up for it in additional, uh, income taxes. So I, I think it's in the perfect location. It's the perfect development. So I'm, I don't have a problem with the impact fees at all being waived.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I would second that. I'd say everything, exactly what she said is what I came in today thinking. Uh, so I would, my personal opinion, I have a motion to approve both.
I think you need to, uh, two things need to be done. I need to be, I need to be sworn in. Um, I wasn't sworn in earlier. And then additionally, um, probably close the public hearing.
Okay. My oversight, James.
Name and address for the record?
James Metz, one Dunham Plaza.
You swear the testimony you're about to give to the board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
See, I have one additional.
We, we actually are still in the middle of the public hearing, so we do have, we, we have, we've kinda jumped the gun somewhat, but good discussion. And, uh, so we're still, is, is there anyone else wishing to come forward to speak in favor of the final development plan? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the final development plan? Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. We'll go back to deliberation. Staff recommendation?
So staff recommendation hasn't changed from the preliminary development plan. It's not something we go back and ask the development committee, so that still remains. Um, city council reviewed the development plan and map amendment as a public hearing at the regularly held meeting, uh, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and voted to approve the zone change and map amendment.
And James, that initial denial from the, uh, staff recommendation was based on its location in a, um, a zoning district that was not for primary use for residential, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just as a ref-.
I'm a little confused.
So now that the zoning is changed to allow this development?
Based on city council's vote.
Based on city council's vote?
Yes.
Yes. It's now zone PD.
Thank you, Monica, for that clarification, cause it was kinda.
Yeah.
No, I just, it always gets a little bit confusing when we go back to previous votes. And I thought as a refresher for everyone, that that was the reason why staff denied it initially was because this was located in a, in a, a district that, based on our master plan, was recommended for industrial use and not residential use. But that was overturned by city council when they approved the PD development.
Yep.
The city was against it. We were all for it.
Right.
Yeah. You all voted to prove it and provided that recommendation to council that then also approved it.
Correct. I, I talk about the stuff, this project on a near daily basis, so I kinda forget which, how long it's been for everyone. So, thank you.
But we are voting for the final development plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. So, in terms of deliberation, we've heard, um, Mr., um, we, we've, we've heard some different comments about maybe putting this into a motion if there is approval of the plan. Do we wanna vote separately on the two items for the waiver? Or do we wanna vote on the final plan? Or is there consensus that you'd like to just make a motion with both?
I'm okay with both.
I'm okay with both.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Wanna make a motion?
I'll motion to accept the final development plan and accept the, uh, request for, uh, the parkland, uh, reduction.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Sam second.
Okay, okay. Mr. Metz, when you're ready.
Sam Cornwall?
Yes.
Roger Dino?
Yes.
Jeremy Laquinas?
Yes.
Paul Nini?
Yes.
Todd Moore?
Yes.
John Lankorn?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, it moves us to our next case tonight. Um, a request for a conditional use approval to allow an automotive sales and leasing at the property located at three sixteen South Brille Boulevard, Middletown, Ohio. And Mr. Metz, I'll let you give an overview of the facts.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So tonight before us, we have a conditional use application for Mr. Ayak for, to allow automotive sales and leasing at the property at three sixteen South Brille Boulevard. The, um, the reason that this is conditional use is because the lot is less than four acres in a B two zoning district. Little bit of background, the subject property is currently zone B two, community business district. The purpose of the B two community business district is to provide for, for areas of the city that will contain a wide variety of commercial and office uses to meet the needs of the city and region that require access to major arterial streets and are in close proximity to major residential neighborhoods. Property is there, um, where the arrow is. Our development code, um, table twelve of four dash three principally permitted uses has automotive sales and leasing as permitted with standards. Standards are as below. Automotive sales and leasing must be located on lots no smaller than four acres, which is the major hiccup for this location, with a minimum lot frontage of two hundred feet. If the lot is smaller than these requirements, the use shall be, require approval of a conditional use application. All outdoor displays, storage and sales facilities must be screened pursuant to section twelve eight, twelve sixteen oh six. It's for new construction. Um, the use shall be located on an arterial street as designed, designated on the official thoroughfare plan. No outdoor loudspeaker shall be permitted between the hours of eight PM and eight AM when adjacent to a residential neighborhood, which this site is. The use shall meet all state of Ohio requirements. The dealer's license must be on display. Automotive sales and leasing must be located on a lot with a permanent principal structure. The parking space requirement, automotive sales and leasing, one space per one hundred square feet of indoor floor area. The air, the approximate floor area is about thirty-six hundred square feet. Please note that this rule applies to new construction only, but I wanted to provide that to, uh, indicate how small the lot is. Middletown master plan, twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan, labels this as neighborhood mixed use, primarily small-scale commercial, office, medical and service uses that cater to the surrounding residential neighborhoods with secondary uses that include residential. Real road is a minor arterial road that satisfies the street master plan requirement lot. And then, notice requirements, public notice was published a minimum of ten days prior to the public hearing of planning commission. Notice was provided to all property owners contiguous and directly across the street of the public right away. Any comments were, that were received were forwarded to planning commission. No other comments at this time has been received. Decisions on a conditional use application shall be based on a consideration of the following review criteria. All conditional uses shall be subject to review under the criteria of the section is as applicable and may be subject to additional use specific standards. The proposed conditional use is established as an allowed conditional use in the applicable zoning district. Proposed use is consistent with the spirit, purpose and intent of the master plan and the general purpose of this code. The proposed use complies with any specific standards as may be established for the use. Any building or structure constructed, reconstructed or altered as part of the conditional use in a residential zoning district shall, to the maximum extent feasible, maintain the exterior appearance of residential buildings of the type otherwise permitted and shall have suitable landscaping, screening and fencing wherever deemed necessary by the planning commission. The proposed use will comply with all applicable development standards except as specifically altered by the planning commission and the approved conditional use. The proposed use shall be harmonious with the existing or intended character of the, of the general vicinity and that such use shall not change the essential character of the same area. The proposed plant, the proposed use will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare or odors. Their circulation on and access to the property shall be so designed as not to create an interference with traffic on surrounding public thoroughfares. Review criteria continued, the design of, of the building structures in sight will not result in the destruction, loss or damage of a natural scenic or historic feature of major importance. The proposed use will not impede the normal or orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. And wherever no specific areas, frontage height or setback requirements are specified and provision for specific conditional uses, then such use shall be subject to the site development standards of the applicable zoning district. The planning commission shall be authorized to waive or modify requirements that apply to the conditional use as may be necessary to achieve compatible development with adjacent lane areas as well as the intent, interest of the community in general wa- in general where the planning commission finds that such waiver modification will further the protection of the general welfare, protect individual property rights ensured that the conditional use will meet the intent and purposes of the code. Planning commission may also impose additional conditions, guarantees and safeguards as it deems necessary to protect the general welfare and individual property rights and ensure that the conditional use will meet the intent and purposes of this code. That ends my staff report. The applicant is not here.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Metz before I open the public hearing? I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one to speak either in favor or against, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff recommendation.
Based on the staff report provided, staff recommends denial the conditional use application for three sixteen South Brille Boulevard to be utilized for automotive sales and leasing.
Okay. Just wanted to ask if we could bring the review criteria up once again. I certainly would be, uh, in, in agreement, uh, for denial. Uh, if we look at number two and number six, the review criteria inconsistent with the master plan and also the character of the neighborhood, which is listed in number six, but we would need a motion for approval.
I agree. It's too small. Not the right spot.
I've been by it a couple times already. I agree.
So do we have a motion to accept staff recommendation for denial?
I move that we accept staff recommendation for denial.
In a second.
Second.
Who was, uh, who seconded?
Mr. Nanny.
I wanna get my name in the minutes.
That name's not around anymore.
John Lankorn?
Yes.
Todd Moore?
Yes.
Paul Nuni?
Yes.
Jeremy Laquinas?
Yes.
Roger Dino?
Yes.
Sam Cornwall?
Yes.
Motion to deny. Okay, that brings us to older new business. Any, uh, older new business this evening? None? Okay. Are you gonna say something, Jerry?
I was thinking, at what point do we tell you that we wanna make a motion to waive the review criteria reading so you don't have to read that whole thing every time?
Um, when in, whenever an application changes. So if it's like a conditional use or a PD, you can ask for, for me to waive it beforehand. Um, before Mr. Moore hands it off to me to give the staff report.
I would agree. I don't think we need to have it read to us every time.
I agree with that.
Okay. I'll move this to adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.